Could it be, I would like to call a public hearing to order. Would you please rise and welcome me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The purpose of our public hearing this evening is to review an amendment to our local law concerning wind energy facilities in the town of Pomfret. These changes were proposed to the board by our zoning and planning boards. In a nutshell, part of what drove it was the desire to split up in our existing law, differentiate the difference between large and small WEX. The large units that connect to the grid as opposed to maybe a small unit that a farmer wants to put up for use on their own property. We did not differentiate that in our current law. So that's part of it, and part was to increase our setbacks and to look at those requirements. So do we have any comments from the board?
Need proof of publication.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record.
Yes, so.
And we also.
Our clerk has proof of publication in hand?
And, Mr. Supervisor, the town has received, yes.
We have received our response.
Yeah, Section 239 referral from the Planning Department of the county, and they have concluded the matter is one of local concern.
Okay. Now I'm back to, any council member have any comments or questions? Hearing none. Do any of the public have any questions or comments? Could you state your name?
Yes, Gail Clark, Town of Pomfret, AR-1. Which is my first question, actually. Can you, does anybody know if the maps, if the zoning map has been changed as far as the districts recently? The, I should say, the overlay, like the wind overlay maps?
No.
Have they changed at all, like in the last 10 years?
I don't think so, Gail.
Okay.
Not totally sure.
And the second, just to confirm, the board did plan on voting on this particular law tonight?
Yes.
So unless I missed something, I was only able to get a copy of this yesterday. It was sort of a lot to absorb. Was it public?
It was. There's been a copy in my office since Jeff, our attorney.
Originally, it was just a week, a week or two ago.
It has been, there's been a copy in my office.
We've been talking about this on and off for a long time.
Two years.
Two years. Years.
Yeah. If you weren't in attendance at the meeting, you know, I didn't see anything publicly about it, so that's why.
The legal notice was posted in the paper.
The classified, what do you mean? Okay, we've been trying to get a copy since last week, and they said they didn't have copies. The attorney hadn't brought them in yet, and we've just got the copy.
That's not accurate.
Gee.
I've had a copy in my office since it went to the newspaper, not before that.
And it just got faxed to Peter's office yesterday.
I was called this morning, requested for a fax, so I faxed it over this morning when I received that request.
Well, it is a lot to absorb, and I guess I was remiss in not seeing this information publicly.
It's in the newspaper. It's the public hearings that are posted on the website. It's been on the board.
It's simply required by law to be on the board and in the board. That's the town law, Mr. Supervisor.
Do the changes serve to make our law more stringent than it currently is?
Yes, and I noticed that, and I did really want to thank the board for addressing this because I can't remember exactly how many years ago we wrote the first wind law.
Almost 14, yeah.
It was almost 14 years ago.
14?
I'd like to see them again.
And it was, it was a bear.
And we didn't know, we didn't know at that point.
And we knew nothing at that point, basically. So, you know, I think we're all very appreciative of the work that you've done on it, so thank you for that. And my other question just was, yes, it seems that the setbacks and the decibels are a little bit, are somewhat more stringent than the old law, but we did get the recommendation from the Chautauqua County Department of Health regarding 1.5 mile setback. This doesn't even meet like one-third of that recommendation, and I was just wondering how you arrived at the four times the 550-foot maximum wind tower? How did you arrive at that figure?
That was a recommendation from the zoning and planning boards that we looked at. We did talk about the county health department, but that was from the health department, not the planning department. So, you know, we weighed all of that. We had people that wanted us to reduce the setbacks and make it easier to put these up. So we weighed all of that, and we felt this was a good middle of the road.
It's not really a middle, but I understand what you're saying.
It's better than where we were.
It's, it's better than where we were, far from middle road. It's.
We talked about, you know, we haven't had any come in to the town. We aren't really sure that, even with these setbacks, that there's places where it would fit. You need a sizable chunk of property, and then enough property to put several together because if you're going to put in a large one, they're not going to put up just one. They put them in groups so that they can connect, and then you need to connect to the grid. So looking at our topography and the town itself, we're not really sure that we would get any.
Doesn't, wouldn't this, though, address two contiguous parcels that were in agreement to having wind turbines on their property? So you could combine, that's, yes, Jeff?
Is it in?
Yeah, they would be combined. Most projects end up that way.
Yeah.
They lease, they lease any number of projects, they lease whatever area they think is required or necessary. But again, no, no specific application of projects has been before the town.
Yeah, and that was, and my last, you'll be happy to know, my last concern here. If you could just clarify, it's not here. I have to, I have the wording. It's my cellphone, I have to.
Again, remember, the way this law works is that an applicant would have to ask or request for a wind overlay zone to be created first, and then a special use permit is an application made before the board.
But didn't we have those wind overlay zones before?
There's been none, no application for one in Pomfret.
No, no application for one, but I thought that they would create, I thought they were selected.
No, we are not. We were saying the applicant would make an application for a wind overlay zone. But they have to come in with maps, charts, locations, all the rest of it. And then there's two parts to the process. One is the actual creation of the wind overlay zone, and then the other is the specific application for whatever number of turbines and where the placement and all the rest of it that would have to be followed the standards. So it's a two-part process for any applicant.
So there are no applicants at this time?
No. Given the topography, you know, the topography of the town also is important. May not see, hard to tell.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something that was in the classified that said that just, oh, here it is, thank you. Something about the applications. But it's okay, I think it's been clarified. Oh, all applications for wind overlay zone are before the town board. So just to clarify, that means that the applications are available to interested parties?
No, it means any application has to come before the town.
It's jurisdictional. That sentence means the jurisdictional board is the town board. Doesn't mean anything's available.
Yeah, no, it just means that any application would have to come before this board.
As opposed to a planning board or a zoning board.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Lynn Bedford, and I have a little disclaimer here. I'm not here in my professional capacity as councilwoman of Arc Right. I am here in my personal capacity as a resident of Arc Right. And I know that if someone would have come with the experience that I have in living at the foot of a turbine and spoke to our former town board, I think things would have been a little bit different. I do live at the foot with my husband of the Arc Right Wind Project, and my health in the past year and a half since they were turned on has suffered greatly. The only way you would know that is to live it on a daily basis. It's, it's a continual thing. Just one example of many is my ears started to ring the day that they were turned on, and they haven't stopped since. That's just one small example. I urge you, please do your homework. Look at other countries in Europe that have had these things around for a long time, and they're a lot shorter over there. They will change certain people's health. Not everyone's health will be changed, but there are some people who are very sensitive to electronics. These turbines have been nothing but a living health for my husband and myself. I love green energy, and if a setback isn't a very good, I think the health department a mile and a half, that's a good setback. Ours are 1,500 feet from our home, from my bedroom window, and the constant sound of them and the torment. We would sell our home, but we wanted to have a bed and breakfast there for our retirement. We can't do that now. So I urge you, please, please, for the people who will be deeply affected by these things, do your homework. Make sure you set them far away from residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mark Twitchell for Donia. I want to first thank the board for what I believe is a very good effort and good faith to protect the citizens of the town of Pomfret from the type of disruption that Ms. Bedford has just testified to. I know from speaking with other folks in Arc Right that the setback that is proposed here, a 500-foot machine, 550 feet at four times turbine height, 2,200 feet, there are people who are experiencing, you know, disruptions to their lives in Arc Right at that distance. And those machines in Arc Right are shorter than the machines that we have here that, you know, those are 500-foot machines, and we're allowing 550-foot machines. Now, the thing I appreciate the most about the law is the L-1040. However, when you look at that, what that means is that for 10% of each hour of every day, the noise may exceed 40 decibels, but there is no stipulation as to how much louder. So for example, if at 2:00 a.m. those machines are blowing 70 decibels, that could certainly be considered still within the legal requirements. So that is why the Chautauqua County Board of Health's recommendation of 1.5 miles is so important for that reason, as well as the reason that much of the noise that the turbines make is not recorded in decibels. And the only way to account for noise is distance. And I don't believe that 2,200 feet or even six times the turbine height, I saw a reference to that, is adequate in that respect. I noticed that also that the distances are to the residences, not to the property lines. Now that means that if I.
They're both in there.
Okay. I.
What's that?
Going through the law, I see that a property owner could decide to build a cabin or an accessory home on his property, but still be impacted by the four times height. So that, I don't believe it's protective because it isn't stipulated in all cases that these noise regulations relate to the property line instead of the residence. And we have a term for that. It's called trespass zoning. The rights and privileges of a property owner can be removed unfairly by intrusion of the noise of the turbines. There are a couple other comments that I have relative to the seeker. I don't expect that if you are approached by a developer that they will honestly tell you that there is no environmental impact. So the way I was reading the law, I couldn't be sure that the town at that point would have the privilege of requesting a seeker such that all of the well-recognized and well-documented and well-testified problems associated with these facilities could be understood by the town board. I would urge, if possible, that the town board conduct a seeker in adopting this law such that everybody would have a clear reference to all the information that's available as it relates to the passage of the law. In regards to the battery electric storage systems, many renewable energy facilities are accompanied these days by large electric batteries. These are the size of containers that you see on, you know, container ships and semis. These have a reputation for being very hazardous. As a matter of fact, the New York State Department of State issued a warning in October of just this past year, 2019, warning municipalities of the hazards of these batteries. Perhaps the town of Pomfret has an upgraded law relating to these batteries, but if not, then I would urge that such a consideration be included in this law so that all elements of these facilities can be considered. Because in the developer's point of view, the inclusion of the battery system is like, they're just going to put that in there as part of what they're doing, and if the town of Pomfret doesn't have an adequate regulation to the batteries, then that could be a problem. In closing, I'd like to add that in New York State, not a single protective wind law adopted by a town or municipality has ever been struck down. I don't think that this board needs to be shy at all about adopting any number of protective regulations because it's never happened. And even reading our governor's egregious new stipulations, which have caused great outrage all throughout upstate and western New York State.
His 30-day budget amendment.
The budget amendment, 30-day budget amendment. And it's clear that he is removing many elements of home rule from the citing of industrial renewable energy facilities. But nowhere in that legislation that I have reviewed does it say that a town cannot pass a protective wind law or that indeed that there is any intent on the part of New York State to overrule a protective wind law. So I would urge the board to consider that. Thank you very much.
So is your request that we leave the current law in place then and go back and look at the battery and all of that?
I haven't reviewed the town's battery law so that I'm not aware of how, you know, how protective it is, but in New York State, 10 feet from a residence is allowed to place one of these, you know, huge storage batteries. And that indeed is what our Department of State was warning us about.
But, but this doesn't address that, so.
No, it's not included in this law, and that's why I'm bringing it up because it could be, the developer could introduce such a thing, and without, you know, a law on the books regulating the placement of that battery, we might find ourselves at a real disadvantage.
So that's something we'll need to refer to our planning board for their consideration and recommendation for us, but really, I would hate to see it hold this up because this actually is more stringent than what we currently have.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Well, several people, so are you saying, though, that you think that we still want to look at this and maybe make some more revisions to it before we pass it?
Yeah, the thing that I would most be concerned about is the recommendation from the county. This board has a very good reputation for coordinating efforts with the county, listening to the county planning board. For example, on the hospital issue, listening to the county planning board when they recommended that you adopt a seeker as part of the law when you rezoned to allow the hospital. So here we have the county, a county agency that did a lot of research over a two-year period coming up with 1.5 miles, and I think it behooves us to, to respect that. Here we have the county, a county agency that did a lot of research over a two-year period coming up with 1.5 miles, and I think it behooves us to, to respect that.
At least if we could come a little bit closer.
The county planning board did get us there, so.
Matter of, matter of local concern. That does not mean that you ignore other departments in the county.
Right.
But county planning didn't have it in its referral.
Okay, yes.
Rod Peneke for Donia. And I really appreciate the fact that you guys are being so proactive, you and your planning board is excellent. Quick question on, when we did it, we engaged legal counsel Hudson and Russ. Daniel Spitzer was the lawyer. Did you do anything like that? Did you have a lawyer besides your own town lawyer? I mean, did you engage us? At the time, Hudson and Russ was the game, and they were the guys that knew everything about wind, right?
They drew, they drew what was originally the wind energy law, that's correct.
Right. This one, though, is done independently?
This one is a product of zoning and planning, me, town board, NYSORTA.
But Daniel Spitzer, his name, fingerprints on it.
No, Hudson was not involved.
No.
They were not involved in this one.
All right. One thing that I read through, I know people in Arc Right, and I know people that have been adversely affected, like the Bedfords and others, and I know an individual whose house is closer to the turbine than the property that is hosting the turbine, than the house on the property that is hosting. In other words, I got 100 acres, I'm going to put the, I'm going to try and get the turbine put as far from my house as I can possibly get.
Right, but next.
It happens to be closer to your house, but if it's within the legal setbacks, you can do it. And I would hope that you could consider adding language that would prevent anything like that happening. It just seems so blatantly unfair that that can happen. And it has happened at least once in Arc Right, I'm guessing more than once, right? I read something in there about appraisals and appraisal analysis being done about property values. I would ask that, I'm not sure exactly the language covers this or not, but that it would be someone that would be mutually agreed upon between you and the wind company, not someone that the wind company just imports from who knows where. And the same would be for your sound experts. Hopefully, you would have input on who those people would be. I don't know that that's always been the case in the Casadeca Wind Farm or in the Arc Right. So those are just a couple things that caught my eye as I made this pretty quickly. But again, you guys have made some really good steps here. I went looking at maps and how many 100-acre parcels and bigger there are in the town, and I used that just as a round number, thinking in terms of the 30, you know, the setbacks that you have. It's going to be hard to build with the setbacks.
Then you have to look to see where the transmission lines are.
Right.
Which narrows it down even more. We talked about all of that.
And I can see that there was serious thought put into this, and I appreciate that.
And it was one of the reasons why we did what we did for setbacks, understanding that.
You have the benefit of the rearview mirror here with some of the people that have had to suffer through this, but good work.
But we knew, and I'm glad you verified that, they're going to be almost impossible to place.
And then to get a cluster enough where it would pay to put them up.
I don't see anything unreasonable in here that could be said to be structuring the law so that it would keep them up entirely. It's just, it makes great sense, I think, so good work for you though. That's all.
If I could just expand on something that Rod had mentioned regarding appraisals for property values and other things. I think the term would be independent study, and I don't know, because I only got this yesterday, it's my fault, but independent studies, and I don't know if that's, if that's noted in the law or not. So not only for property values, but bird and bat studies. And I clearly remember mentioning Mr. Spitzer. I clearly remember.
I remember.
You remember that? Bringing it up at the meeting 14 years ago about pre-construction studies and post-construction studies being done by an independent company. And that's when he slammed the table and yelled.
But that should be part of the seeker because that the northern long-eared bat is an endangered species, and that's something that is prevalent in our area. So they would have to take that into account with the seeker study when they do that.
Yeah, wasn't that taken into account, Lynn, in Arc Right by Dr. Townsend? And what, was that ignored then by the board? See, there were recommendations, and it was an independent study in Arc Right, but I guess they mitigated the problem. I don't know if that was the DEC or what, by allocating a property 400 miles away from the Arc Right project for a place for the bats to be safe.
Relocate.
Is that about right?
Yeah.
That's as I remember it, and it's ridiculous.
Well, yeah, we can't speak, obviously, to other boards and other towns, but we're doing our best effort to try to make sure that we, if somebody approaches us, that we do it right over here.
Yeah, well, just that we learn from others' mistakes.
Any other questions or comments?
So on that note, I mean, I just want to say, you know, thanks to the planning board. They did do a lot of work at this, and I want to hats off to them. They passed all this information down to us, and for those of you that maybe didn't speak tonight and don't understand it, just understanding that what we're doing here is a lot more than that 550-foot windmill, right? It covers a lot more. So hopefully helping out the people of the town of Pomfret in many different directions. I'm personally fine moving the setbacks higher if we see fit or we want to. I think we've, honestly, with the document we have today, I think we've covered what we need to cover, and I think we've set the town up in a very good way, but that's up to us if we want to move some numbers around just for the one-off that may happen. But I'm currently comfortable with where we're at.
I'd be in agreement with Paul's point that to adjust some of the numbers and then get it right. I mean, it's.
I think it is right. One other topic I wanted to bring up in regards to the battery storage part, I would prefer not to put it in this WEX. Battery storage, there's many different ways that battery storage can be used, not just wind. So I don't think it belongs in here. I do think it belongs in its own law someday, and I'm not worried about battery storage right now because it's really not there yet.
We're getting there, you're going to see one from me having in connection with solar.
Totally agree, and we'll cross that bridge when we, when we get there.
But you'll get one soon from me.
But it would make sense to do a separate law to cover them because then it would cover both applications.
Yeah.
Or any other application.
Or either, right.
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay. Now we need to complete the.
We need to, the board needs to review part two of the assessment form.
State over and then I'll start with the U.S. form.
Yeah.
Are you finished with the public hearing?
Not until we review the secret form.
Yeah, if you're going to review the, in the public hearing, you're going to review part two. Then you'll close your public hearing and then go into your regular session.
We'll do the declaration.
And then if you get, if you get to a point where you can make a negative declaration or a declaration of some sort, you'll do that in regular session.
Okay. Sure. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Now remember, the proposed action is the creation of a law, okay? So it's not the approval of a project.
A project.
So I would say no or small impact.
Correct.
Will the proposed action result in a change in use or Will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No.
I don't think we have one, a CEA after that I'm aware of. All right.
But this wouldn't change it.
Yeah, that's right.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and if it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing private, public or private water supplies? No. Public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. So, we can close our public hearing now?
Motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for having us. We just got asked, how does state...
Where you going?
He bought it.
Did you hear what Rod said? He wanted to know how Diamond River puts through the spring. Pissed it out.
Was he the longest sitting supervisor?
Uh, Tom who? Might have been the second longest, but I would have to look at the dates.
You're not going to stay for the regular burdening?
Good move.